So, good evening, welcome. Workshop tonight, we're kicking that off, so we'll call to order the workshop. I have my iPad up here for the residents, I'm not ignoring you, I'm not, I only brought one of my agendas, so I have the agenda for the workshop right here, so. You know, so we have a lot to accomplish tonight, but I want to throw this out there, full disclaimer, because I don't have a dog in the hunt, I'm not a Green Bay fan, I'm not a Dallas fan, I know, I'm a Detroit fan, because I'm from here, but man, that game last night was horrible, it was horrible, just, if there's any question whether either one of those teams are playoff contenders, I think it was answered last night with a hearty, no, because they don't understand the word defense. Okay, so, we'll get into it. So, call to order seventeen oh one, announcement of citizens comments. Yes, oh, I thought you were calling me. Matt, can you check the signup sheet one more time, there was nobody signed up, or Shane, somebody over there, just check the sheet, I don't think we have any citizens signed up? Okay, so I'm gonna forego the announce, the citizen comment, this, oh, did she want that read in for this session? We can, we can do that, I can pull it up, I think, or if one of you guys, if one of you guys have that and want to pull it up, I'll go through this, so this is an opportunity for members of the public, suggest addition to topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with a presentation limited to three minutes, please, all speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner, all speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes state law prohibits the mayor, members of council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas open meeting law. You're not signed up yet, did you want to speak at the workshop? That's okay, we can take a minute and let you get yourself organized, and you can sign in, you're the only one right now, okay. While she's getting organized here. Oh, you can just hold on, yeah, she's, yeah, she's the only one. Good evening, JoJo, and go.
Okay, JoJo Guzman, twenty-two, will run dry. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, thank you, everyone, I really do appreciate everything that y'all have been doing. Again, first, I want to thank you all for your service and acknowledges the challenges that the council has been facing, I appreciate the work you do for our community and understand that many obstacles are beyond your control. That said, the ongoing budget delays are troubling to me, this budget should have been completed months ago, even accounting for changes along the way, yet these delays appear to stem directly from some entities not fulfilling their responsibilities. While training and consultations are important, the amount being requested for finance HR far exceeds, in my opinion, what is reasonable for a city of our size, the city should not be expected to fund such a large allocation for training and consulting fees, if personnel lack the essential skills to perform their duties, it is not the responsibility of residents to cover the cost of correcting these gaps, instead, it is necessary to ensure that staff are in the right positions and are adequately qualified to handle those responsibilities. The budget is too important for all of us to be held back by performance issues and a lack of concern for providing to council and residents with information in a timely manner. I respectfully ask that the council consider taking steps to ensure the accountability for in the future and for the concerns and now to help for, to stop and avoid further delays and overextension of budget line items, thank you all so much, and I really do appreciate y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda. Counsel, if there's no objection, what I'd like to do is drop straight down, and Dennis, if you're okay with that, we'll do the audit presentation from, or auditeers, so twenty-five oh seventy-six, I just made that word up, I don't know, auditeers, musketeers, and it sounds good, I like it, sorry, I know I probably threw our staff out of whack, you guys probably weren't ready for that one, I apologize, it just, it struck me as a good idea. There's a little good idea fairy, if you've never been in the military, I guess some civilian organizations use it, but the good idea fairy, she shows up periodically with just all these great and wonderful ideas that are over your shoulder, like, oh, that's a great idea, but never really considers how to.
Good evening.
Yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Louis Breedlove, I'm senior audit manager at Brooks Watson, I have the pleasure of working with the city to get the twenty-three fiscal year audit completed. PowerPoint presentation, I think we're getting lined up to be able to share that with you. But in front of you is also a bound copy of the report, there's a printout of that PowerPoint presentation, as well as two letters inside the front cover of the report. And I also got hit with allergies this morning, so I will be fighting through this, so I apologize in advance for it.
It is something down here, because I was fine until I got out of my Bronco, and then I was like, so, it's not just you?
Something's in the air, I don't know what it is. But first, I do like to utilize this PowerPoint presentation, just go over the results of the audit, we can open up to any questions you might have, so first, process, so, first phase is the assessment phase, so we, we're looking at, pretty much anybody who's coming in or going out, we're evaluating what kind of controls are in place, so we're, we have questionnaires and walkthroughs that we perform through each of those departments to gain an understanding of what controls exist, we'll follow as we're, documents, as well as the questionnaire, sample testing through those areas, to ensure that we see what we, documentation documents, keep on cutting out.
Is there a green light?
On. I'm hearing it, sorry. Okay. Check, check, I think it's been out a little bit. There we go, see if that works a little better, okay, great, thank you, I thought it was just, allergies affecting my ears, I was like, okay, so, so then we do what's called a risk-based approach, so every financial statement line item within the financials have the different type of risk associated with it, so we evaluate those annually, they can vary depending on what's going on year to year, so that will then drive the type of procedures we perform, what level of detail we perform those procedures, to ensure that we're comfortable with the material accuracy of the financials once we've completed the audit. Then there's the compliance phase and filler phase, that, the center section there, so the compliance phase is, one, we're looking to see if the city's in compliance with Public Fund Investment Act, if there's any bid requirements that may be necessary at this time, it would have been fifty thousand dollars for a lot of those activities that we would want to ensure that those items are bid out, then if there's any grants, we would look to make sure that the city's in compliance with the grant requirements, which the twenty-twenty-three did have a grant component to it, the ARPA funds were utilized and triggered that single audit, and then the, and then the, sorry, oh, and then we review all city council meeting minutes, so there may be something that during your meeting minutes that you may approve that has a compliance component to it, so we review all those meeting minutes and request support for anything that may have some compliance aspect to it, in addition to the other items already mentioned, to ensure that you all are in compliance with those as well. And then we do the filler work phase, that's the bulk of the work that you think of when you're thinking of the audit, so we're, we're tying out the balance sheet, we're confirming with third party wherever possible, performing cutoff procedures to ensure that activity that happens after year end or even before year end is actually intended, should be recorded in the fiscal year under audit, and make sure that those are captured within the right year, and then as we're tying out that balance sheet, we are testing the material accuracy of your revenues and your expenses, often those are confirmed as well, or otherwise tested. Then we have the conclusion reporting, so that goes through multiple layers of review, so to ensure that no additional procedures are necessary, all necessary testing procedures have been completed and all required communication and no disclosures are included in the report that we have for you. Next, just to go over the components of the audit report, so, especially if you're not as familiar with what all is in this document, so, so from front to back, the front is the auditor's opinion letter, that's our opinion over the financials, it's really the only part that we actually contribute to the report, everything else beyond that point is coming straight from the city. And then there's the management's discussion and analysis, that's going to give you some year-to-year comparison, it's going to also cover some of the most material areas of the audit, so it's going to cover transactions that relate to debt, capital, and also we'll touch on budgetary activity as well. Behind that's your basic financial statements, so that's going to include both your government-wide full accrual statements, as well as your fund-level statements, which those fund-level statements are typically what you all would be used to seeing whenever you're looking at financial data within your council meetings, and then the notes to the financial statements, that's going to give you a lot of detail pertaining to those financial statements, lots of times there'll be a graph or a chart that breaks down what the numbers are from the financial report, or just paragraphs that describe what those numbers consist of, to help the reader understand those financial statements a little better. Behind that's your required supplementary information, so that's going to be your budget to actual for your general fund, and then behind that's other supplementary information for TMRS-related activity, as well as consolidated statements. Next, now, as it relates to the auditor's opinion letter, that first item that was on that list, so there are four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to issue, there's an unmodified opinion, a qualified opinion, a disclaimed opinion, or an adverse opinion. So, this year, the city did receive a, it's a, referred to as a qualified and unqualified opinion, so there, it's primarily an unmodified opinion, which is referred to as, often referred to as a clean opinion, however, there was one aspect of the audit that, either just due to the lack of support on revenues, we were unable to include in that, that clean opinion, so thankfully, it's really, the revenues are there, we were able to see that the activity is hitting the financial statement, so it's there, we're able to tie out the balance sheet, everything looked great on the balance sheet, expenses, we were able to test, revenues, most, most of the revenues are tested and verified, there was a few transactions, we just did not have support to determine specifically what they were, we were able to see that they were received, so there's not a question of whether or not there's money there or anything like that, but just unable to determine specifically what those revenue items were.
And I specifically ask you what those were and the magnitude?
Yes.
And you gave me a schedule on it, which was really helpful, and for the rest of you, because I'm going, how can we not have support for property taxes, you know, or sales taxes, but it is police donations, grant revenue, grant revenue, grant revenue, and a sale of an asset, mainstream, well, grants should be mainstream, but, but it's more, you know, one-off, we've got six thousand dollars for this, twenty thousand dollars for that, the total doesn't look like maybe fifty thousand?
Maybe sixty thousand or something like that.
So, in the scheme of the financial statements, and this is the general fund?
That's only in the general fund?
That gives you kind of a...
Yeah, a better idea of what...
Relativity, yeah.
Yeah, when you just say just revenues, it does, makes you, sets off a little bit of alarm bells, but, you know, the, like you said, the bulk of the revenue is fully tested and accurate, these items, you know, they're coded to maybe a grant revenue, because we don't have sufficient support to determine what exactly it was, it could have technically been some type of other revenue, miscellaneous revenue, and it's coded to that account, there's, we're unable to determine what they were, these are transactions that happened middle of twenty twenty-three, so, you know, the staff worked really hard to try to find support for this, they were pulling their hair out trying to find this stuff, and we ultimately were like, let's, just to be able to get this audit completed, this is what we'll have to do, so, so, but overall, very pleased with the effort made by the city to be able to get us everything we needed, because we know how difficult it is when you're, one, someone new coming into the organization, having to figure out where things are, but then it being as old as it was, being twenty twenty-three data, so, it, you know, those, going back into archives and storage and all of that to try to find everything they could, most of which was, was obtained, this, because of those items, we weren't able to scope it out as immaterial and say, well, yeah, we can still issue a completely unmodified opinion, we did have to lump those in and qualify for those, but, so that is the auditor's opinion in summary. Any questions on, on that? All right, great, moving on, just some quick financial highlights, so this is comparing the previous audited year, twenty twenty-two fiscal year to twenty twenty-three, just kind of, and looking at the fund balance, change in fund balance for those funds, so general fund had an overall decrease of a hundred and two thousand, which I have a budget to actual summary here in a slide or two, that'll give you a little bit more information on that one specifically. The grant fund, we saw a decrease there of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, which was in line with our expectations, because that's the ARPA funds that were being utilized during the year, which was, is what triggered that, that single audit, so, that change was utilizing those funds for water infrastructure, which those were just transferred to the water utility fund to capitalize there. And then the capital projects fund, you'll see that there was a deficit there in the previous year, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, that was due to a timing issue with transfers related to those same projects, so those utility projects consisted of both funds from ARPA, as well as grant funds, and some of those expenses hit the capital projects fund rather than the water fund, and so those, so it was really a timing issue on transfers, which was what caused that, caused that initial deficit fund balance there, but that was all corrected and fully transferred in twenty twenty-three, which is why there's a zero-dollar ending fund balance for the capital projects fund.
So, capital projects, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're funded every year, so we have a capital projects fund, and the transfers coming in from the other funds equal the expenditures that go out, so never really should we have a deficit or an overage unless, what?
Ideally, you would have a CIP fund specifically for projects, so you know what goes in, what comes out, and it's one place to look, well, we didn't always, I don't know, did we actually have one, or did they mix it with the water fund?
So, that, the projects that were going on were, were water in nature, and so the debt that was issued for those were all being tracked within the utility fund, for some reason, some of those project expenses hit the capital projects fund rather than the water fund, and so the water fund should have paid the capital projects fund back, which is why that went deficit, and so, so those transfers didn't occur, which is why...
Should we maintain a separate capital?
So typically, you want to have...
For the general fund, and then one for the enterprise funds?
It's good to have, if you're, when you have a capital project, it's typically good to have a capital projects fund, which typically you're only going to, you can do it a couple ways, I've seen cities do it slightly differently, but if you have bonds that are issued for a capital project, then you want to make sure you're maintaining that and restricting that specifically for that project, and so there's going to be a capital project fund created for that, and so cities often will have one fund they use to track that, they might have a separate account, bank account for it potentially as well, depending on what that bond requires, and then you would also do the same on the utility side, so, depending on where those, the money actually goes in terms of whether or not it's part of your pooled operating fund, typically you want to break that out, so you want it to be like in that, some type of investment pool account, is usually what happens, and then whatever, as those funds are needed, they transfer them from the investment pool account to the operating fund to get paid out, so you can do that.
So now we're talking cash, probably cash needs to be isolated as well as the expenditures. In other words, if we get cash in for a project, that needs to be in a separate bank account, maybe?
Bond funds are so restrictive on how they're utilized, so you want to keep that, it's better to just keep what goes in and comes out.
We're doing that now, right?
Where, this year was the first year that I saw that we actually had one separated like that, but in the future, it won't be a question, because that's the best way to track it financially for everybody concerned.
Yeah, and, and you could add, sometimes you can get real broken out in detail with it, like depending on what all the city has going on, the city might have multiple products going on, and you can get, you know, get kind of convoluted at times, if, so some may choose to break them out and have separate funds for each one, you can also just categorically be very detailed within your account structure and say, these codes are specifically related to this project, and these codes are related, and it can all be within one fund, tracking capital projects, so, there's a couple ways you can do it, biggest thing is making sure they're being detailed, detailed tracked and restricted and used for those intended purposes, so, again, so if, if a city chooses to, hey, we want to do this capital project, and it's not bond funds, it's just, we want to take some of our money and put it towards this project, you can, you can choose to transfer it to a capital project fund, or you can just...
Do that with roads, you know, it's still all part of the general fund, but we do have a separate...
Account.
Yeah, well...
Not fund, but account.
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes to CIP for road, so we know what goes in, what comes out, but the reason on the bond, just to highlight that, is there, if there's a covenant with those bonds on how they're going to be utilized, I've, you know, seen other cities go, and they kind of didn't do their due diligence, and you find out that you spent more than what you, especially a GO bond, and you was authorized to spend that, so it can really create some problems, and there's cleanup that has to occur, so...
You think we're in pretty good shape now?
I think it's moving in that right direction, yeah.
Okay.
That last line is non-major funds, so there's a few, a few funds that do not qualify to be considered as major funds, so those are consolidated in the back, they're typically always going to be the special revenue fund types, and that are used for very specific purposes, those tend to have low volatility unless there's something that's being built up to be utilized one year, so that, you can see there's just an overall decrease in two, of two thousand dollars, so, not, not much movement there, and so, nothing to be concerned with there. Next, general fund budget summary here, so this is comparing your budget numbers to your actual numbers for the year, that far right column is the difference between the two, so you'll see the revenues had an overall positive variance, so a hundred and five thousand more coming in than was budgeted for, those expenditures overall did have a deficit or negative variance of seventy-one thousand, so seventy-one thousand more than budgeted, and then other sources and uses, so typically there's going to be transfers type activity, those are deficit as well, but pretty minor, but overall, total variance is, a budget variance is twenty-five thousand positive, so that's...
And normally, we budget a balanced budget, and this has the budget as a negative hundred and twenty-eight, but that's because we made amendments, correct me if I'm wrong?
That's, yeah, that's right.
Amendments during the year that we decided to spend more money that year, so that should be, we did approve that deficit, if, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, it's, and it's, the thing, to adopt a balanced budget, you technically, you can have a balanced budget and choose to draw down on your fund balance, so, I'd have to go look at your budget document to know exactly what that looked like, but if you have an original budget where you, where you approve that, hey, we're going to utilize part of our fund balance, when you carve that out, that's a balanced budget as well, so...
Yeah, we did that in twenty-five.
Okay.
Trying to remember in twenty-three, oh, we weren't, we weren't here, okay, I wonder I don't remember, okay, right, okay.
But there's a detailed look at the budget to actual on page sixty-eight and sixty-nine of the report.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
So, but it looks like the original budget also was a budgeted deficit, so it was planned for, so this is really in line with what was expected.
Okay, good.
And then just as it relates to general funds, fund balance overall, so it is recommended by, as a minimum, the GFOA recommends that cities maintain at least a reserve amount or unrestricted budgetary amount when comparing it to your, your, your operating expenses to your fund balance, two months, so, or sixty days or sixteen percent, so for twenty-twenty-three, the city had fifty-nine percent, so, we really encourage the cities to do more like twenty-five to thirty percent, some cities get higher than that as a minimum, but that, again, is a, a minimum recommendation, so you guys are at fifty-nine percent, so really more in line with fifty percent is like a good, a good spot to be, and obviously, if you're reserving that for something down the road, this is also twenty-twenty-three, so...
Right.
I'm not sure what's...
We've spent some since then, yes, we have.
Probably spent, excuse me. Next, this is quick highlights on your proprietary funds, this is going to be your water, wastewater and marina funds, these operate differently than those governmental funds, so we break them out, we treat them and consider them differently, they, so we want to make sure are they self-sustaining and operating well, and so we look at that, that first line there, the operating income line, there could potentially be a loss, and we see that from time to time as well, but from an operating standpoint, the water has an operating income of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, wastewater had an operating income of twenty-eight thousand, and then marina had an operating income of a hundred and sixteen thousand. That second line there is after any other non-operating transactions that occur, so water, you can see it jumps up from an overall operating increase of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand to one point three million, and that's primarily due to those transfers in from the capital projects and ARPA grant funds coming in to, for that ARPA water project that then got capitalized, and then wastewater, this minor change is up from twenty-eight to thirty-five thousand, and then there's no change in the marina. So, yeah, those, those funds look good and healthy and operating well at that time, so no concern. Next, the communication letter, so there are two letters that come with the report, the first letter is a communication with those charged with governance, so that's a letter that has a lot of required communication as it pertains to the audit, it goes over our responsibilities for the audit, management's responsibilities for the audit, and there's a couple things that, that I always want to carve out from that letter and make sure I point out, so one is that audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence, two, while we did have the full cooperation from management, there were some difficulties I encountered as a result of turnover and then available support, which you all were fully aware of, so, but that's something that's communicated in that letter, and then, second, or third, that there were no uncorrected misstatements identified, meaning there were audit adjustments, but those have been reviewed and those are being entered into the system. And then, so that letter also has an exhibit in the back that contains the audit adjustments for the year. And then that second letter is communication regarding internal controls, so that would be where if we've had any concerns, whether it be potentially efficiency things or our control concerns, we would list those out there, so there were a few items that we included there as well, which I'm happy to, to discuss any of those, if you have any questions on those.
No, I had sent you a list of questions I had, from all, I think I understand that, and I think I understand the letters and your recommendations, and it sounds like management has responded to your concerns and controls, and most of them is, we're on it, we're on it, so...
Many of the, at least a handful, or maybe half of the ones that were noted, I know that when Dennis came in, that he started working on things like policy stuff, like I knew those were already being addressed, but out of twenty-twenty-three, they were not in there, so...
Louis, can you highlight the single audit, just so they'll understand?
Yeah, oh, yes, absolutely, so, there's the single audit as well, which isn't on that PowerPoint, but it's captured within, it's captured within the, the audit report itself, in terms of the expenses are all in there, it's capitalized, but if, in the back of that bound book, there's a, the audit report is in the back, and, I don't know if you can see it, I'm sorry, say that again, there's, there's this page here, that, on page eleven, almost, it's a report in the back, it's one, two, three pages from the back?
Yeah. And this was to audit the ARPA funds?
Correct.
The million, something?
Yeah.
To verify that it was spent, and it was spent on the groundwater storage, that...
Yeah, so there's a, whenever a single audit's triggered, there's additional procedures that have to be completed, in addition to the standard audit procedures over expenditures, there are also compliance aspects to it, to ensure that the city did meet all requirement, all compliance aspects of the use of those funds, so that was tested, and the, in twenty-twenty-three, it was almost fully utilized, the funds you had, I feel like the third to last page there, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars was used in twenty-twenty-three, the remaining two hundred-ish thousand was used in twenty-twenty-four, which will not trigger a single audit.
And then who does this audit go to?
Well, once they're done with it, we're responsible for, for reporting the information, so the state will get it, and feds will get it as well, but it's, it's our responsibility, they're the ones just to put it together.
So it's compliance for the grant that we received?
We're late, but the governor's office knows we're late and why, and we'll get that out soon.
Yeah, so that gets uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse, it's like, and then, then any other grants you attempt to achieve or obtain in the future, they'll, they'll, that's one of the things they could, they do, they look to see, hey, do we have single audits for them, they'll ask about that. They'll ask about that typically when you're trying to go out for grants. So that, that, um, but then anyone who, if you had like multiple granting agencies, they would all be able to go to that site and see, okay, there it is. And they would draw it down and, and be able to utilize that to mark the compliance within their systems. So in this case, it's just ARPA funds. But yeah, so those, there's no, so from a, from the federal, uh, grant side, there were no, no findings and it was a clean report. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of fun information in the report, a lot of, you could spend a lot of time reading through it and, um, so if you do have a question, I mean, I know we'll have the, we have the, the council meeting still to come, but if, if after today you think of anything you have questions on, um, just let me know, my contact information is there. Thank you.
Did you just say a lot of fun information in there?
For nerds like me, yeah.
I was going to say, you probably, you probably enjoyed that football game, didn't you? Okay. Thank you, sir, very much, appreciate it. Everybody knows audits are. Kind of the, yeah, we'll, we'll just, okay, um, council moving on, uh, obviously big night tonight. So we're going to jump into, uh, budget and taxes. Got to get her done, so we're here till two in the morning if necessary. No, we'll take that long, so, uh, Dennis, Flo's yours, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor City Council. To pick up where we left off last meeting, we, when we had the discussion, the last direction provided by council was to take and come up with what a recommendation would be from the city manager's office. And in addition to that discussion, it was, uh, discussed perhaps also at the 6253 because of the de minimis rate, which is .6398. And then the current rate is .6253. So we provided both of those in documents you should have received. We have another copy tonight if you need to have that. I'm going to ask Mary to go over what that breaks down to. There's a provision at the bottom of that that's really important, regardless of what option A or B you all decide on tonight or whatever you do, uh, we need to make sure that the bottom portion of that at our request, that's considered for amending the proposed budget. Because there's some things that identify which is, uh, that we would like to make some adjustments. For example, one of the things had, uh, 1,200, it should have been 12,000. So there were some minor adjustments made behind the scenes, but that's all incorporated on that, on that Excel spreadsheet that we provided. So Mary, go ahead.
Let's turn back on. Yeah, while she's coming up, let me, uh, just for clarity's sake, um, the, uh, I hate Outlook to begin with. So there was some discussion about, Dorothy, some of the recommendations that you had.
I brought copies.
Yeah, so just, so you guys are tracking, no, I, and I'm, I'm good with that, but just so you guys are tracking. I know we discussed it and, or I, you know, shot a message out to you guys and, and it was supposed to go up to, your recommendations were supposed to go up. Those did not actually, they never left my, um, my outbox, so they never received them, which is why there was some miscommunication, but.
I can hand them out now. Okay.
Well, what we have here is what council director does provide you as far as from staff, so I just want. I asked for, yeah, okay. So what you have, so we got the feedback from some council members. We didn't get the feedback as far as which option they were, uh, looking at in total. So what we have tonight before you are our recommendations. If you'll look at, uh, that, lis- listen to Mary, see what you think. And, uh, again, we can, uh, we primarily was for the de minimis rate of 6398. But then, uh, as an added, we, we looked at the current rate and what that meant had we went down that road as well. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, uh, good mem- good evening, everybody. Uh, and council, uh, before you, I know that we don't have it for the screen, but you do have the options that Dennis, the city manager, made reference to. Option A for the de minimis rate at, uh, .6398 with the additional revenue of 85,718. Uh, there would have to be some adjustments made to the proposed budget of, uh, 4,000 for community events and 5,282 for marketing. And then, uh, there is $25,000 for the quarterly cleanup that is in the budget that would make or offset that 120. So that's why that's there. So the net change to make.
Cause that's in, that's in a couple of options, I think.
Yes, because the $25,000 was budgeted as part of the quarterly cleanup, but the 120 also included that 25, so it really should have been less than 120. So either way you look at it, the $25,000 is there budgeted.
Yeah, let me, let me give clarity on that.
One's a revenue and one's an expense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, uh, but, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so this 120 is a revenue, but then 25 is a.
What it would have been, what, let me go ahead and give clarification. What it would have been is that 25,000 had the fee stayed in there and went to a special revenue fund. So we knew what was going in, what was coming out. That 25 would have been earmarked for the, and reprogrammed for equipment needs, which is one of the, part of the programs, what we're looking at. So it's, and that revenue was already in there from the previous year's budget at the 6253. Remember last year's budget, we had the quarterly cleanup, we budgeted for it every year. We have to have those dumpsters and what have you. So that's in there, you know, wha- either way. Uh, we proposed a program, the program did not go through. However, the adjustments may very well still come forward. If they do, we still need some additional equipment. And one of the stuff, one of the things we bought and you all approved recently was the chipper. It's out and, um, I believe, uh, BJ's already had everybody trained up on it as far as I, from my understanding. So my, my point is, is that the 25,000 is still there. It's not a, it's something that will be used for its intended purpose. Under this scenario, under this scenario.
Looked like we were taking it out.
No.
Originally, I think it was, it was, it looked like that, but it really wasn't. It was not meant to be that way, so we, we turned it.
Yeah, that's why I put net change on there because it wasn't being removed. It was going, the funds are still there for that purpose. Okay, uh, so option B, um, would be decreasing the community events, the marketing, the road improvement repair, the grant contingency, uniforms, capital replacement, city manager contingency, employment reimbursement and health insurance for a net change of 120,000. And then proposed changes that we have that no matter what, whichever option you choose, uh, there was a, a typing, uh, error that needed to get adjusted. So, uh, we're proposing that the road improvement repair, uh, offset equipment maintenance and repair and that the 30,000 for grant contingency be reduced, uh, in order to offset the 30,000 in computer support for the website, because it was budgeted, uh, in the 07 budget for the technology, but it was not in the transfers that needed to go to technology. So that 30,000 would come out of the grant contingency.
But it's not related to a grant. It's just related to a bookkeeping.
Right, that, that's the, that, right.
Balance.
Correct, but if we're going to, um.
He's just taking it out of somewhere then.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I see, okay.
Yeah, and those are the descriptions, we need to work on the descriptions, but that's the way the chart of accounts are and I need to, we talked about making sure like all the transfers, would it 699, 4299, it'd be across. But those are the, the accounts that were already set up. So there'll be some changes to the descriptions because the descriptions right now are kind of misleading. Um, and that's the best we can do right now because that's the way the accounts are set up. And then, uh, you also have a copy of the revenue and expenditure summary that lists on there and I think the adjustment for the 30,000 was in the actual software that had 174,000, which is why we needed the 30,000, which is part of the grant contingency. So this had, this is just an updated, the numbers are the same, just a little more of the descriptions are revised.
So in the actual, um, final, what we'd like to see, recommend to council is that the proposed staff recommendations, regardless of which option A or B, or something you all come up with on your own, that that stuff, uh, on the bottom and the following two pages is in part of the amended, uh, proposed budget. If someone, when the motion's made to adopt it, if that could be included, it would sure help us on the staff side of the house.
Yeah.
Do you want to call this 2026 budget amendment number one?
Well, it's, it's, it's just been proposed, so ultimately the budget's going to be.
Make a motion to.
Uh, we, uh, you amend the proposed budget, yeah, and not so much on number one, but during the adoption. Because the budget amendment number one will be a 25-01, it'll be in the future. This is just an adoption of the budget. Council always had the pri- a privilege of moving things around and changing things to their liking because it's your all's budget. It's just a proposal. And so that's all that's really required. But we want to include that and so when you get the adopted budget and we use it online and what have you, it will have all this updated information on it.
Yeah, the system, once I make these changes, would, all the changes, whatever way we did, you all vote to go, I'll make the changes and it'll be part of the adopted budget. So when we send it back to you, then you'll have it. So right now, it's, it's still proposed, so it's not.
Okay, I, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mary. Mayor City Council, uh, what I'd do now is just real quick, just take me about five minutes, go through it. If you'll look at the PowerPoints, uh, slide up here, you should have, do they have a copy of it as well? Okay, we'll get you one if you don't have one. The, um, proposed budget has three different, uh, deliverables, deliverables that we're going to need to see. One is the adoption of the budget, one is to ratify the increase and obviously to set a tax rate. One of them, the adoption of the budget is a record vote, which means every one of you, you have to be separate in that. It won't be a, you know, everybody raise their hand at the same time. The next one is a vote to ratify property tax rate. That actually can be a raise of hand, you know, however you would normally vote, that's not a record vote. And then the final one is setting the tax rate is in fact, uh, another record vote. The next page talks about the record vote on the budget, I just went through that. The next thing, ratifying the property ti- tax revenue increase. For the local government code, there is a requirement to identify that extra revenue. You've already heard the numbers before, but I just want to highlight them again. Total tax revenue increase is 250,152, about 7.08%. Maintenance operation would be a 244, 148.36. INS would be, be in interest and seeking, uh, to take care of our debt would be $6,003.64. The one thing to keep in mind, the way that debt is calculated is actually what debt are you going to pay during that current year? In our case, it's 142,090. You take that number divided by the total value of the property that we have, which is 591,000,168,887. And that comes out to .0240, probably not on this calculator, but on others that go further out. And that's why we, and then times 100 and that's your, that's your debt, okay? So it's not really done like the, how, it's not as done as clean as some of the other things you might see. The next slide, that's number five, is ratifying the property tax revenue increase. There is a vote to ratify it, it's just a, it's just going to be a city council memorandum. It's, uh, again, uh, something that's a process and that's, that's step two I talked about. When you set the tax rate, that's something that we're going to be talking about in the next couple of slides. But, uh, right now, uh, what's under consideration is what you all proposed to do, which was raise it to the de minimis rate, which is .6398. Part of that's the maintenance operation, which is .6158, and then there's your debt, .0240. Next page on seven, you'll see that the taxpayer impact statement, uh, there's one online, but this is just to highlight that, uh, tonight's taxpayer impact statement may or may not apply. If you all happen to lower the, to the 6253, uh, rate, which is lower, that's the current rate we have now, then, then this would no longer apply, it would be actually less. And what the government really wants to know, the, the, for the truth in taxation, is what's being increased by. So we obviously wouldn't have one tonight if it's, if it's going to go down because right now it's all based off the proposed. And then of course, it's got the median value, home value, that went from 292 down to 282. There's like 8200, a little bit more than that savings difference, if you will. Tax rate, 6253 to 6398, uh, you'll see the difference in the rate is .0145. Annual property tax levy, this is the breakdown, 20, current, under the current tax rate. And then of course, under the proposed, and there's a $10.38 difference. Monthly cost is 152 versus 151.39, and of course, that's an 80, up 87 cents. It, it, remember rounding, it depends which calculator you use, but it's also on the impact statement, you'll see it at, uh, .865, I believe.
And those are decreases, but.
Those are decreases, yeah. Well, the, the actual taxpayer statement will say that, yes.
Okay, good, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it says it on that, this, that's something I should.
Not that the tax rate is increasing, but the other three items on there are decreasing. Tax rate.
Yeah, the tax rate, yeah, if the tax rate goes 6253 to 6398, it is an increase of .0145.
Everything else, maybe get brackets or something, so it's, it's a.
Yeah, on the taxpayer impact statement, you'll see it, that's, this is, you're right, I could have put that in there and I didn't.
Okay.
Uh, setting the tax rate, remember, this is that third one and that will require the record vote. There's approval of at least three members, it's got to be 60% of the council. So in our case, five members would be three members, uh, that must vote in favor of it. There's a mandatory clause, not really an option, that, uh, the, the law requires this. Whenever the motion is made, it must state these words exactly. Uh, I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of a zero, uh, or .6398, which is effectively a 6.03 increase in the tax rate. The way they look at that, the state looks at that as not so much between the 6253 and the 6398. That's not what they're talking about. They're talking about the no new revenue rate of, in this case, it'd be .6034 to whatever rate you set, in this case, it'd be 6398, which that is a 6.03, okay? If you go to the, um, well, let's, let's stick with that. The tax rate adoption is a record vote, as I said earlier. And that's really all there is to it on those there. So yes, we would need the motion on the adoption of the budget with whichever option you go with, A or B, and of course, with the recommended staff proposed, uh, recommendations and supporting material. And then if, uh, that's on the budget, then we do, that's a record vote. And then we do the resolution that deals with ratifying increase. And then we do the setting of tax rate and that's, that's one where we need to actually, um, set the tax rate that's going to fund that budget you're going to adopt. So it's budget, ratifying, and then setting a tax rate, in that order. And I think that's all I have.
Yeah, so, uh, council, looking at, um, Dorothy, looking, and I just, I didn't catch this till just now, actually, looking at, um, going through the numbers. The, uh, apologize for the microphone. Yeah, so looking at, um, option A, uh, and, and council, this is obviously your, your, your decision or anything. But looking at the numbers that you pushed forward and then option A, um, you had, uh, recommended 10,000 decrease community events and marketing, which.
Let me tell you what I did.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I just said, okay. At this six point, I mean, 6398, so I went and took that 85,000 and then I talked to Mary and she said that that health insurance of 8,400 is really a budget correction because that person is not opting to take healthcare. So our healthcare costs are overstated, so that's a no-brainer, we take that one. And then the other two, I honestly think we take one of the staff recommendations, but we should take the 8,700 because it's a budget error.
I'd recommend you don't and the reason is, is because if another employee happens to say employee retires, leaves for whatever reason and the next employee comes on board, they may or may not, let's say that's one of the ones that's not currently taking that, that frees up that 8,700 or whatever it is, then the next one may choose to do it and now we'll need a budget amendment to hire somebody in order to pay for their healthcare. We have no buffers whatsoever. That 8,700 gives us one person that if they choose to do it, that's all the money we have, so that's why it wasn't recommended.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, and then with the addition of the, the 25 from quarterly cleanup, just the, the way that is moving around. But the numbers that jumped out at me were the, uh, the proposal A, option A, uh, is community events and marketing totals 9282. You had, um, 10 marked on your sheet, so I mean, it's. Yeah, no, it worked, that's what I mean, it just, it just kind of occurred to me, so, um, anyway, I, I, I say all that to say nothing apparently. to me. So anyway, I, I say all that to say nothing apparently.
Oh, I understand where you're going.
Anyway, yeah, moving into the session, essentially that's what we're gonna need to do is, council, I need you to take a look at these numbers, determine if you want any changes. Kind of working backwards like we did in the last session. Obviously, everything is predicated off the tax rate. So we did a straw poll. The decision to move forward with the proposed tax rate was 6398. So that's the first thing. Put them back in your mind and see if you want to change that. Assuming that is not going to change, then we need to start looking at the additions to the budget, option A, option B, along with the staff recommendations. So unless I'm missing something here with the numbers, again, like we just discussed, your 10K was pretty spot on for a dart at the board. It looks like the numbers can be met using their recommendations. The only thing that really jumps out is the, you had the decrease in grant contingency of 15805, which I'll go back to the 30K for, that we discussed, grant contingency for the website. But again, that is null by the quarterly cleanup addition, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And I didn't put the quarterly cleanup in there because we just got these options. And I thought we were cutting $25,000 from quarterly cleanup. And I went, we're not gonna raise taxes and cut services.
No, that was on me. That was on me. I should.
So I don't know if we can name that different, but we are still doing quarterly cleanup and we have budgeted 100% for quarterly cleanup. So it's really not taking anything from quarterly.
And actually it shows it's under garbage dumpsters, I think is what it's listed as. It's gonna get.
We're not getting rid of dumpsters.
No, no. But it's gonna get, it's gonna get reprogrammed, retitled to the proper title. But we don't need a budget amendment for that. We know that's just a adjustment. It's a reclassification of the name only.
I mean, that's fine. I really just, that was where I was coming from and not cutting the 25.
That's on me. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so before we adjourn, take a quick break and then get ready for a regular session. We'll go around the room. Any workshop comments on the proposals, the tax rate and where we're headed?
I've got something that I just want to hand out, but it is absolutely not for discussion because it's highly sensitive and it's inactionable at this point.
Does it fit in the agenda with budget related?
Does it fit in? Okay. Mary had given us 25 and 26 payroll information and it was on a spreadsheet that was really long and I condensed it down to a couple sheets. But I just want to point out to council, again, not for discussion, but just for awareness that our employee benefits, you know, we've always tossed around 30%, 35%. Well, right now, our employee benefits are basically 40%. So every dollar we spend on payroll, 40 cents of that is for benefits. And I put the percentages on there. I mean, our healthcare is almost 14%. Our TMRS, our retirement, is another 13%. Of course, we have FICO, we have disability. If you add training in, that's another 5%. So we're bumping up to 44%. And if we say, well, we're gonna give everybody two weeks vacation. So that's another 3.8. Again, awareness of the benefits that we're giving our city, which are excellent. But as far as, when we add a dollar, we add basically 40 to 45 cents in benefits. Then she gave us a list, and I don't focus on the people on this list, focus on the positions. But she gave us a list of 26 and 25. I went back to the 24 budget and I dropped in 23 and 24. So the next sheet is compensation by position of 23, 24, 25, 26. The next sheet is salary by position for those four years. And then the next sheet, just so Mary knows I'm honest, I dropped in your Excel spreadsheets, but just with the columns I used and I hid all the other columns. So the last two pages are Mary's information. Something to stew on, something to think about. We can't continue the trajectory that we are doing with payroll. So again, we're not gonna discuss this in the budget session, but it is budget related because it is the majority of our budget. Oh, and then the other thing that's, and I can hand this out later, but you know, we had asked Mary to look at the admin fees that the water fund and the marina fund are paying the general fund for us providing services to them because it has been the same fixed amount for three years. And so I'm saying, our costs are going up. Why shouldn't we charge the water fund and the marina fund for our cost increases? So she did the sheet and it's about $50,000 additional funding to the general fund if we charge the water fund and the marina fund at the current payroll levels that are budgeted. We might use it for, you know, a budget amendment coming up. We might be able to do that. But she did provide the information for us. And so it is $50,000.
Just real quick on, on that, franchise fees, I'm all, I, I think it's definitely appropriate. However, and they should be getting, we should be getting administrated full cost recovery. That said, there's a lot of heavy expenditures coming out of these funds. Until we get the final two audits, I don't recommend doing anything that, that would possibly jeopardize anything. And I'm not saying it would or wouldn't. I just don't know. But I do think after the audits come in for 24 and 25, we'll have a clear picture of what's, and plus, we also need to make sure our revenue's hitting where it's supposed to be hitting. And we've seen the expense and we've seen some revenues not. So I think that's needs to be flushed out and then brought to council for you all to see the total picture before making some of those decisions.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that. I'm not pushing to do it one way or the other, but it is information that this council should know. Okay.
Anything else from council? Okay. I've got 1758. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn for about five minutes and then we'll re-